Agenda item two of the joint meeting, is that something that would be appropriate?
I think you guys should go through the ordinance, but you could recommend that the STR committee consider the question on ST.
Yes, here, okay.
Or something of that.
Sure, I have no further comments.
Okay, well, I'll chime in then.
Sure.
I actually agree with what Chris is saying, particularly from the standpoint that we now have a whole new bureaucracy who's going to be looking at this thing, which is the State Housing Commission, what, I forget the acronym, but yeah, HCD. And as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have not heard from there, from them, in terms of any comments on the, this ordinance. So I, just as we have been through so many times before, we will go through a document and then it will be changed a lot from the result of Coastal Commission staff input. So if we already, if we, if we have to go through that and we have to go through the Housing Commission, I, I have no objection going through it tonight, but I just feel like, you know, sometimes we're wasting a lot of time when we know that there's going to be changes coming down the line.
So we have gotten more careful, well, more diligent, at least in consulting with the Coastal Commission on things. And the Coastal Commission now is working closely with HCD, so one of the people in their office specializes in these HCD ordinances on meets with HCD. So she has been communicating with HCD about Trinidad or Trinidad's ordinance, even though it hasn't been officially submitted to them. But she has taken questions back that we've talked about in our meetings. And so, and they would like to get this question answered before officials submit all the HCD.
Like I said, I don't have any problem of doing it tonight, but under duress.
I, I imagine, you know, it very closely follows the state law. There's only some minor deviations primarily at the recommendation of the Coastal Commission to protect coastal resources. I don't expect that it's going to change a lot. There's not a lot of room to.
Thank you. All right, so then are we okay at least just proceeding and discussing it tonight, keeping it on the agenda?
I, I mean, I would like to go over some of the stuff. I have some questions just about to clarify. But yeah, I, I also will say I'd like to see it again, kind of at some point in a, you know, to raise this point, wants kind of the dust to settle for the other stuff, so.
And with, you know, some of the inputs where possible opportunities exist. Is there a motion to approve the agenda then?
I will move to approve the agenda.
No second. All right, in favor? Okay, at this time, we reserve three minutes per person for items from the floor. I see nobody other than our city manager here and nobody online. So we will move past that onto our first agenda item for tonight, which is an update on the closure of the trail and progress to date to reopen it.
All right. So just a monthly update on the temporary closure of Axolotl Memorial Trail. So we, we got a report from on via the Trails Committee that the TAS have said that they are going to discuss the report at their November board meeting and then present the report to the management team, and they've also communicated that to the city manager, so we're still waiting for that report. The city manager did have public works, do some work on the fencing at the top and bottom of the trail. People can't go around it. And then also the city manager has requested GHD to put together some recommendations for some short-term repairs to the trail to be reopened while the reroute is being planned. So all those things are moving forward. I think we're making some progress.
Do you have anything to add? No?
No, I actually covered it well. I just wanted to make sure if you guys had any questions about anything. I'll just elaborate a little bit. So the Axol Limerick Memorial Trail at the top, we extended the fence considerably, probably at least thirty or forty percent, you know, in addition to what we had previously. That goes into the very briers and, and they can't get around it before they were, there was a little bit of area that looked like some people had tried to go through there. And at the bottom, we.
Recording in progress.
What they call reattached defense, just to make sure that it was where it should be on the posts. And then they added some material that they called it the branches to create like a thicket so that, you know, people wouldn't try to go through. Otherwise, I checked it today at the top of it, so I checked it at the bottom the other day. And with the batting and the netting that's on it, I couldn't see any kind of footprints or anything or something that seemed to indicate that people were trying to use that and look quite secure. And hopefully we can get, you know, a copy of the report soon after they take it to the TRI management. Well, first we're taking it to the TRI Ancestral Society and then bringing it to the TRI management team. And then like Trevor was saying, we're hoping that Steve Alk can come up with some kind of a short-term fix. More likely of the tale, what we had previously indicated, that we would do possibly repair a couple of steps that might be dangerous. Short term, and then definitely create some easier, hopefully a safer way to go from the trail to the beach. Might be successful or whatever.
Questions from the Commissioner Tom?
Do you, do you plan on reaching out to see if they could be here for the next, for the December meeting? Were that.
When you say they, meaning?
I mean, the, yeah, the Ancestral Society. Is that something that?
I could ask them, you know, I could, I could tell them that the planning commission, I mean, if you guys as a planning commission request it, or I could tell them that one number of planning.
Yeah, well, we're kind of curious and we're getting monthly reports. Right? So that would be the next big thing. And also, I was, I asked last time, who's going to pay for it? And I understand that this, this initial work is done by, is paid for. But for the trail itself, who's, who's kind of been paying for the trail? Is, is that the city?
For rerouting it?
Yeah.
Um, we, we would have to look for grant funds and, you know, we might partner with the conservancy. Has, has offered some potential funding and they might partner with the Ancestral Society and apply for grant.
You're open to doing that. You're open to doing that, to whatever it takes to make something nice.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're getting the grant managers and we'll be getting the grant managers involved in the repair options so that they can, they know what's going on and can keep an eye out for grants.
Great, thanks.
Tom, just to clarify for me, the request to have the TAS at the next meeting would be to have them present their findings, the report, or what would be that? Just so we can kind of get the.
To get the report.
Okay.
That's how I see it, to be able to see the report. The path is the big thing, the route, you know? If the path is going to change, that, that changes significantly and helps fix. Yeah. So that would be a really strong thing to give is the understanding of how it's going to be routed.
Yeah, which would be a more long-term fix.
Which is, could be, the sooner we figure that out, the sooner we can figure out how it can happen. Once the path is figured out, then we can have steps to the path, but if the path, the path needs to be determined by the Ancestral Society, as I understand it.
Yeah, that's the long-term path. The short-term path would basically be where we currently, where people have gone down. Yeah, just make some steps so that somehow people can safely meet that here.
Yeah, I understand. That's the, the second option. Yeah, but trying to do something to get a real route going that's going to be for a long-term.
Yeah, and like Trevor's saying, that's going to entail grant funding, so that's going to take a lot. But what I'm getting at basically is you wanted to see a copy of the report, is that the main reason? In other words, if they submitted the report, would that be sufficient by your January meeting, unless you need December? Or did you still want to see them here?
Yeah, whenever that be the next step in moving forward, you seeing what the engineer has to say. And, and also, they're looking at the report in, in ancestral meetings and hopefully there's a path and the vision starting to develop. Yeah, whatever information you can get.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure that I can relay, you know, what the intent is from the commission as to, if, if they definitely want, want to be present or if it's mainly to get a copy of the report. You know, so, so I think. Anyone else as to how we should bring this to the?
But I think the, the report itself would be excellent, right? I think they should also be involved in discussions of, of this short-term solution, right? Like if there's a specific route of the short-term option that is most appealing to them, then we should certainly consider that.
Yeah, what I wanted to do, and I'll try to talk right out here, was basically to utilize the existing route that people use. And this way to allow enough room for work on the post route. You know, without trying to move it where it might be closer to that, make it more difficult to work. Some hoping that once we open it, then we can keep it open for the most part, you know, while they're doing some work on the other.
Right, but they, they have some influence over whether soil distribution is permitted, right? So it'd be nice to know what options are acceptable.
So we, we do plan on bringing this to a management team meeting, and I think that's probably the best venue to start, I guess.
So I want to make sure that it's clear, because what I understood from reading your staff report is that the city manager Eli is requesting GHD to provide recommendations for short-term repairs.
Right.
Which is, my interpretation of that is that that is not in the report that GHD is submitting to TAS.
Right.
Okay, so there's, there's really two, two reports that we're interested in, I think. One is the short-term, one is the long-term. Okay.
Right.
Okay, okay, I, I, yeah, I, personally, I, I don't know that we need to have the Ancestral Society here for either one of those. I think it's most appropriate that, given the sensitivity of all of this, that that once the report is submitted, then, then we can take a look at it after that.
And then for your information, the meetings that we've been having with the TRI management team, they have actually been online, so they haven't been present in person with, with them, maybe the representatives Sarah and Helen. So more likely, if they did appear at some point, it probably would be as soon. Okay, so for the time being, we'll focus on number one, proceeding with the short-term base with our city engineer. And number two, to try to get a copy of the report as soon as possible and then share it with the commission. And then, as Trevor was saying, we'll, you know, try to discuss this with the TRI management team. And then in the future, consider creating the TRI Ancestral Society here as needed.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I would express to them that the planning commission is asking for a copy. We're not trying to get, we are asking for a copy of that report, just to, if that helps with your communication with them. And then I just had a question for either one of you. When is the next TMT scheduled for? I see that there, the, the TAS is going to get the report presented at their November meeting. When are, when is the TMT scheduled to have its next meeting, when it would in theory be presented?
Yeah, we, we do have a TMT meeting next Wednesday, which will be discussing the Trinidad Coastal Resilience. And then we're going to be mentioning it that meeting also, the fact that, you know, we want. We can get the report now, we're getting the report.
When's the next TMT meeting after the November one? Is there one scheduled?
Yeah.
And do you happen to know when the Ancestral Society is having their November board meeting? Is it going to be before or after this?
Yeah, they have.
Okay, so they might not be ready, given the timing then. And then the last question I have is that, just the, the comment about the last paragraph where it talks about, you know, you're reaching out to GHD. I just want to express a little concern over the word that it's hoped to have these by the end of the year. I hope we can maybe direct them or ask them or tell them we would like to have these by the end of the year. The, you know, the, the temporary reopening option.
Right.
Because I think if we just kind of wait on their timescale and don't express to them that it has some urgency to us, I, I see this continuing to just stall out, and then we're going to find ourselves up against the next renewal timeframe, and that's going to be particularly frustrating. You've not had some progress.
Okay.
So maybe reach out to GHD and say, you know, can we have it by the end of the year? Is there any reason why we won't see it by January first, so that we can then see it theoretically at our January planning commission meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, and we did indicate in the request what the timeline would be that we were looking for would be to get something for the January meeting, so, you know, we can make sure that we share it with the commission.
Right, thanks. Moving on to agenda item number two. We're always riveting policies for after-the-fact planning permits.
So this has continued from the last meeting where we talked about potentially making some changes to the policies, so we talked about adding some clarifications within the text itself and then adding a standard procedure and condition to clarify that all expenses are you guys like the wording, and you approve it tonight or make some more changes?
All right, we'll open it up for commissioners. Have you got anything on this, anything you want to see different?
So Trevor, I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to make sure. I want to know, I, I think it would be useful that we understand how policies like this fit in with where this is. And what is the precedence? How do they integrate together? How do they interface? How does it all fit together? And, and the reason I'm asking that is for the purposes of trying to understand how much enforcement we have with this policy.
I, you know, I think that this for after-the-fact permit processing, I think that policy is probably the appropriate place to have it. And it's really, even without this policy, this is basically the process we would use. It's just that it would be a little bit more fly-by-night on the conditions of approval. So I think this gives applicants and the planning commission, you know, a little bit more surety and, you know, some information upfront to know what the process is going to look like. Because again, we, if someone did, if we didn't have this policy in place and someone did work, we put a stop work order on it, whatever, and then tell them either remove it or apply for a perfect. So we use the same process basically, so we're kind of putting it in writing. Something like the detached living space and definition of a kitchen, that would be best in an ordinance at some point. But because, you know, anything has to go through the Coastal Commission, and we know anything going through the Coastal Commission takes years. It was easier just to set it by policy. And again, it's, it's conditions of approval. And so, you know, an applicant does have the ability to object to conditions during the hearing or appeal your decision. They don't like the conditions. So, you know, again, I think it's, it's not improper to have it as a policy as opposed to ordinance, but when we do the big update, we will include some.
So there would not be a situation where someone could come back and say, I don't acknowledge this as being legal, because it is not a formally approved part of the general plan or ordinances?
I think someone could try, but again, the alternative is just to make them tear it out.
Well, what if they? Yes, you're right, of course. But how do you enforce them to do that?
Well, we do have nuisance baiting ordinance, so unpermitted work is.
That's, I guess that's what I'm trying to get at, is that there is.
We do have a formal, conformant nuisance baiting ordinance, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one, I guess, comment slash question. One of the things that we talked about, that brought this up, is the frustration that there's no our, our hammer, our penalty is somewhat weak, as far as, you know, economic deterrent, that kind of stuff. And the, the item four, the condition number four that you have in here, I just didn't know if it was worth putting in here. I had sent to you, Trevor, I don't know if I got it to you in time to look at. It was from the county of Placer. And for everybody else, it's, it's, it's a, county of Placer has a, an example after-the-fact building permit. And one of the things they had in there that I thought was interesting is a little bit more of a, of an incentive to not just ask for forgiveness, but to actually ask for permission, was that for additional, a, a cost after-the-fact permits, they have to have basically a wet stamp document from an engineer, registered engineer, geologist, or architect saying, you know, stipulating certain things, you know, things that can't be seen. So there's an expense, there's a cost, there's a hassle with finding someone that's willing to do that after the fact for somebody. And I don't know if that held any interest, or if you thought that was a good thing to have, or again, I know I didn't get it to you in time.
So that would be part of that, sort of the standard after-the-fact building permit process. So they would, as part of getting the building permit, they would have to have someone draw up detailed plans, including the footings and things. I've even heard of where they actually make, you know, if it's a foundation, they actually maybe dig up the foundation and cut into the wall so they can see what's in the wall for after-the-fact permit. So they do do that as part of the building permit process. We don't normally require stamped plans at the planning permit stage. But if it's an after-the-fact permit, I mean, you could, it's already there, so you could as part of.
What other commissioners thought about that idea?
I mean, it sounds like it would be caught at the building permit. They, like, we could approve a project after the fact and then they apply for the building permit. And then our building inspector or city engineer should enforce that, you know, said, said structure is structurally sound, it's stamped, you know, the design that is stamped by engineer.
Not necessarily, right? It wouldn't have to be.
It depends, some, I'm guessing probably that platform probably did not require an engineer stamp. The previous project that was larger, that would have required an engineer stamp. So it depends on the building code, what requires an engineer stamp.
It was just a thought, you know, because again, if, if it happens at the building inspector's time, then there's again, no economic disincentive to just ask for forgiveness instead of permission.
Yeah, I think, you know, I, but I think it's a good point in the city does have a new building official. I haven't had a lot of contact with him. I was sort of wondering, and I get, there just hasn't been permits, or am I getting referrals? So it might, you know, and so maybe the question is having some sort of follow-up. I should follow up with the ability inspector and make sure, you know, I sent him this stuff, but I didn't get confirmation that they applied, that they even have a reply for a building permit? I don't know. And maybe that's the piece that's missing in the follow-up between planning and building. Which I should do anyway, but part of the formal policy then might be.
So just, if you could take it just one step further, what wording would you, would you request? I mean, I understand what you're asking for, but you do say that all expenses related to permitting unauthorized, including but not limited to studies, plans, remediation.
Et cetera, I mean, if.
Yeah, I mean.
I guess my concern, yeah, I hear, and I, I went back and forth, because et cetera opens us up to kind of almost whatever we want to require. Right, you know, things like that, right? I just didn't want to get us in a position where somebody might think, well, that's, that's above and beyond what this, the intent of this is, and then we're arguing that point with somebody. I mean, what they have here is that just the letter must specifically identify and certify the following items, and they list foundation, entire lateral structure, floor framing, wall framing, roof framing, and roof diaphragm. That all work completed on the structure without benefit of permits conforms to current codes and structural requirements. So it really puts some teeth, and I, I don't know, if we don't feel that's necessary, I'm fine. It just, I came across this in my research and I think it also will serve a little bit as guidance for the building department. Hey, here's, here's the condition, so here's some things you know to look for. This is one more thing that we have to have and we're looking for. And it, it could preclude somebody having to unnecessarily tear open walls and expose foundations if there's somebody wanting to say, no, it's built to that. Here's my, they're taking on that liability, so to speak.
I don't know. Is that, what's the, what's the difference between what you have in mind and what's in condition number two, I guess? Are there any other standards documenting conditions and/or proof of permits for existing ordinance?
Uh, I guess for me, it sets a standard, you know, a registered geologist, architect, engineer is different from just providing evidence. Here's a picture, this is a picture I provided. This is somebody with credentials saying, yes, I agree, this does meet those criteria.
Well, then, with that, and, and maybe I didn't comprehend the entire thing, but if it was an electrical issue of being unpermitted, that's not included there.
No, you're right.
So, I mean, you could, you could carry this on
For sure.
for a number of different things, if it was a plumbing issue, or if it was electrical. What else, other than, than maybe, you know?
This, you know, this is probably something that we don't really need to worry about. It just, I came across it and wanted it to just kind of
Yeah.
get it the light of day for all of us, just to see and think about it.
Well, we could add either a new number. The number two I was wanting to do was sort of pre-existing improvements, what was the idea with that? So, but maybe it could go under one or go between them, that they may be required to show proof that work complies with all codes, applicable codes and standards and regulations.
That would help.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at the opening paragraph or the intro, you know, wet stamp, blah, 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 stating that all work completed on the structure without the benefit of permits, so that would encapsulate everything. They just went additional step and specifically called a few things out, but all work is all work, be it electrical, framing, structural.
With a caveat that not every project would necessarily need that.
Absolutely, right? Yeah.
So we're thinking maybe enter putting that. Uh, like in addition to bullet point two, is that?
Trevor is Phoebe or sweet.
Well, yeah. I mean, it could be its own, it could be added to. One or two. Um, but the wording is the applicant may need to show proof that all unpermitted work complies with all applicable. City codes and regulations.
Yes, I still would like add, if we're gonna add something, I would like. Added that it needs to be from a licensed architect, you know, wet stamp design, because otherwise that. It's not just something from a general contractor, from somebody else kind of. Or builder or, does that make sense?
Well, let's see.
But not everything requires this.
Tristan's point, it may not require.
Right, yeah.
But if it does require, then in order to be compliant in code, it would. It would, they wouldn't be compliant without that, right?
Same.
Yeah, on building plans, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm also fine if everybody likes it as is. This I'm happy with and we can always revisit and if it becomes an issue or if you think there's a way to handle this, Trevor. With the building department that would make more sense rather than putting it into a policy.
Why don't I, let's not finalize that tonight and all. I mean, unless unless, I mean, I think. Putting something in may need to show proof that all unpermitted work complies with all applicable codes and regulations. Probably covers it. You know, I think that's pretty safe. Um, but if you want me to do a little more research or talk to to Dan.
Well, I'm comfortable with the wording that you've put there, but I think it probably also makes some sense to, um. Just coordinate with the building inspector to make sure that he has. But he doesn't have some other comments.
Sure.
In item ones, um. We added and certified after will be reviewed, which is to say. It will be held the same standards as if the work had not been completed and will be reviewed and certified according to the standards and regulations in that review would and certified apply from someone has. For licenser licensure required to certify something.
And I guess one thing is. This is planning permits. And again, at the planning stage, we don't normally have that level of detail. Um. I'm not sure this does the policy doesn't necessarily say it's just. Well, I guess it's a planning commission, so anything that would come about planning commission.
And it's not, I I hear your point, Trevor, but it's also, I feel it's not quite just a planning permit because it's already happened. It's a little different, so to me, those same rules don't apply.
Yeah, it could. So so maybe the thing is, is to. I mean, we could have a section, we could have a separate section for planning and a separate section for the building.
Could you explain that?
So we could have standard procedures and conditions. Um, for after the fact, planning permit approvals and standard procedures and conditions for after the fact building permit. So we, if if there's a separate.
Is that in our jurisdiction too?
Well. That I would, you know, is probably dictated by the building code, but it's not a bad thing to have in writing for the public to know. But because I think that double the permit fee that comes from building code. So it it would basically just be kind of outrunning the requirements of the building code.
So if I'm building a house. Myself. Um. I have to come to, you know, and I'm. And I come to the planning commission, I need. Uh, prints. For example, when Tom. Lake, I'm sorry, not Tom Lake. Davis, excuse me. Came, he did not have signed off. Prints.
That's right, or even the vandercalls. I mean, they've had nice detailed drawings, but those are not.
Right.
Structural drawings.
And I I guess what I'm getting at is that there, we approve that. Without having a wet stamp. So, okay, so I I guess I'm trying to, and I and I agree with you, this is after the fact, this is, you know, somebody's screwed up. But I'm just wondering if it's really. We're we're asking them to provide all of the, uh. Required permits, et cetera. But there may be cases where a a sign off is not necessarily required. But still would be acceptable to the bu- building inspector, right?
Potentially. I mean, I think some small projects, um. You know, kind of laypeople kind of do the specs. Um. I've seen quite a a variety of drawings for building permits.
Right, right.
Um, and yeah, not all of them have to be stamped. I wonder, I mean, you could do something like, you could require. That they submit a building permit application and a planning application.
At the same time.
Yeah. And then you could have comments from the building official. Because they have it built, so they would need those.
Right.
To apply for the building permit, and it's not going to change unless you guys change it and. But it's already built, so. I mean, that might make sense is where you have to apply, you have to have your billing plan submitted and maybe approved by the building official or something like that.
Ones have systematic drawings and the others. Struggling bodies.
Yeah. Yeah.
Would make sense. I I like that because more I'm thinking about this and in having this discussion, that what I'm, what I suggested is kind of more getting into the territory of the building department, which is not ours. Um, necessarily in in that little detail. So could that be a condition that you come to us with a approved building permit?
Or at least.
And that way then at least we feel comfortable ahead, the building department has looked at this and believes that the work was done to standard because that if they have a signed off building permit, right? Now, can they get a signed off building permit without? The planning permit? Can that chicken go before that egg procedurally?
Let me talk to the building official, but I I like the idea. I like the idea and maybe it's maybe it's not that the building permit's signed off, but that we have. A recommendation from the building official. Maybe that's what it is.
And in theory, we could condition our based off the recommendations being complied with or something.
Yeah, yeah. And then that would help the ensure that there's not a disconnect, like we know they applied for a building.
Yeah, I like that. I mean, it would be good to get the building officials input.
Yeah.
Comments.
Yeah.
I mean, that would, that would allow for. Be anyone on the commission to, you know. Question whether or not it's mentioned your stamp or something like that.
But yeah, but thinking about this after discussions, again, I would probably defer to the building official on that anyway.
And he would be able to explain.
Right, okay. All right, so Trevor, you have what you need to bring this back to us again.
Yeah.
All right, uh, on that same topic of bringing these back to us again, agenda three, the ordinance. Is there, before we delve into the staff, a thought or an approach? Away from our traditional page five pages that makes more sense tonight? Everybody, or you just want to start with that and go?
Uh, as I recall, Trevor had very specific questions for us. I think that above all else, we should ensure that those questions get answered, including the room. I I would second that.
But that doesn't mean you can't review the rest of that.
Right. So yeah, I guess if you want to run through the staff report and then specifically the questions that you have, and we'll start there. Sounds great.
And then also you guys saw this in. What I think it was, and so I tried to incorporate your comments or I asked my questions. Um, in there, so those, you can see those. Um, yeah, just a little bit more background, uh. Yeah, this is one of the state mandates that, um, yeah, if we weren't in the coastal, um, we would just have to implement the state law. That would. But it's a it's a very complicated. Um. Code and there are, you know, there are certain. ADUs that have to be approved ministerially and then in they need these conditions and then there's these other. Um, standards that, you know, you still have to approve, but for some reason they're like different. It's not a super well-written law. Um, and then the city can allow more or larger ADUs. So there's sort of these minimums. The city has to allow these sort of minimum standards, if these ADUs, these things. Um. And then, and then, you know, there's a lot of situations that are kind of applying there. Multi-family development is just not. You have to allow ADUs, like twenty-five percent of apartments, AD. During storage closets and AD. It's weird, but that's never going to happen in Trinidad with the SEPTA limitations. Um. So I tried to simplify it a little bit. So that's one area where HCD might say we need to add. Some provisions, because I tried to leave some of those things out because it's just, it's already complex as it is. I don't want to make it more complex for things like. Um, and then, and I also combined, like I was saying, there's these sort of sort of two layers of these minimum ADUs that cities have to approve, and I just kind of combined those. Sort of one, one, the state says you, they can't be STRs, and the other one says. You can prohibit. There's a little bit of a gray area. Um, and then there's the coastal resource protection standard. So then the coastal commission has dictated some of this as well. Some of it has come from me, the the parking. Um, I have gone a little bit beyond the the state in terms of requiring. Parking on the streets that don't have parking. Um. The height limit is another one I talked about in there and I'm working with coastal commissioner. And then they they've been really concerned about the, you know, weather stability setbacks. That was their big issue. Conditions, um, I think I made a note in there that those. Those standard conditions are likely going to be standard conditions on any permit in those areas in our big LCP update. We don't have them now, so they're adding them to the. Uh. So, you know, we did develop this under the. SB two grant, which is done now, um, but you know, I think we're committed to finishing this up, um. We are going to have to. Housing elements have to be approved by HCD now, and so, um. You know, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to continue to deal with HCDs, so, um. So we're just, we're moving forward a bit. I think we're pretty close, um. And. So, yeah, so there's some specific questions in the ordinance itself. Um, but the primary one that, um, coastal commission wanted. Your input on is the STR issue, because staff are not in agreement and neither are coastal commissioners in agreement on this issue, so. Um. Want to know what the the city wants. There, um, so, you know, at this point, I'm proposing, you know, to sort of keep it to those minimum standards that the ADU itself can't be an STR. Um, but then the question is, can the primary unit be an STR? And. Do we allow home share and residence STRs? We could, and I think, you know. The argument is that Trinidad has a cap on STRs. The development of additional ADUs is not going to result in additional STRs. So it's not going to, you know, the idea of not allowing them to be STRs is because ADUs are supposed to provide housing. Um, and so, um, so the state or coastal commission doesn't want them to be STRs, but in Trinidad's case, because of the cap. If if one becomes an STR, then that means there's another, then there's another house that's available for rent, want. So, um, so I think it's not, um, so much of a housing issue in Trinidad, so it's what, you know, what your preference is, what you think. Do, and we'll take that back to coastal commission and HCD.
Um, I I realize we're kind of jumping around, but since we're on the subject of STRs. I guess my feeling is that this this whole ADU. From a kind of a top level. Perspective is designed to provide more low and middle in housing. And and I certainly understand that and. And even in Trinidad, that probably could be accomplished with additional ADUs. The problem that I have with saying that. ADUs can also be STRs, but we're using a lot of accuracy. Whole sentence is full. The the problem I have with saying that an ADU could be an STR is, yes, the cap is there. But. It takes away that low income and middle income housing. Because typically. You know, STRs are rented at a pretty high premium. So. I don't have an answer and I I, you know, I'm still grappling with how we would do that, but I just feel like. It's contradictory to the po- the state policies to say. You know, just, you know. Flat out that ADUs can be STRs because we have a cap.
I think that, so I am proposing that. The ADU can't be an STR. It's the primary. And so I think, you know, I think. In in one sense, you know, or or even the home share or the resident STR. So if. Would a homeowner be? Would a home, would some, would a potential home buyer be able to buy a home, be more likely to be able to buy a home? If they knew they could build an ADU. And then rent out the home when the government's up. The residence. That, you know, so that might make housing in Trinidad more affordable in that sense. But, you know, I, it's a complex, it's a complex issue. It's not, there's not a.
So how would, how would that work for existing ADUs?
They would not be subject to that, so.
So they would be.
Maybe use. And and that's a, and and that's another question that I think you could consider is, this is for ministerial approvals. If someone came to the planning commission for a used permit, could they request their ADU be allowed to be an STR? So these, um. Yeah.
Thank you. It's clear as mud.
These are, yeah, um.
I I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get off on a tangent, but since.
No, I I think that's a really good tangent to get off on perfect personally, because I I mean, we're going to get there anyway going through it. Um. I desperately want to have this discussion with the STR committee present. Um, I will say I'm not sure that the, the, the three-party joint meeting is the right one for that. Um, I think it might be better to see if we can have a meeting with just us and the STR for combined meeting, combined or meetings one month. So I, you know, that we can talk and come something and then present that finish to the council kind of. Otherwise, then we're going to open up. Not that it's a bad thing, but then. I'm not sure it would be as productive just saying that forward on that because I, yeah, these are really interesting. Questions as far as the. Yeah, the ADUs, how to manage this. And what the definition of affordability is, you know, affordable housing. If you can do this, does that make it affordable? Is it not? And. Because we have to consider circumstance where there's only two buildings on the property. One's an AD, one's the primary. What would that circumstance look like? And then, yeah, I mean, I just think there's a lot of. Work we can do and maybe, you know, one of us or. Trevor could go to an STR meeting to kind of prep them ahead of time. Hey, here's what we want to. Talk about at our joint meeting so that way they can kind of be thinking about it ahead of time and make the best use of our time. But that's. Like I'm wandering way away from what we're talking about tonight. Since we're wandering, I did have a question on the height requirements and really wanting to try and understand that. So the state has set their limit of twenty-five, twenty-six for ADUs. What's their?
So before January first this year, it was sixteen feet. Or detached. ADUs and no more than a ten percent increase in the height of the existing building or attached.
Big. And so currently that.
New one is eighteen feet. Detached ADUs. Twenty-five feet or attached.
No percentage. The only way around that. Or to preclude that from, to supersede that would be if it's part of our certified LCP, right? So it, this currently is not, the AD ordinance currently is not within our certified LCP, right?
That's right. Nothing. So ADUs aren't allowed at all, basically, except in the SR zone. If you have a double-sized lot. You can have a second unit, but basically they're not allowed at all currently under.
And, and the state law mandating them doesn't take precedent. We have to craft our own AD ordinance because, okay, I'm trying to weave all the different things together. So let's say we draft an AD ordinance and put it up and it, and it goes through the, in theory, if it were to pass all the hurdles, we could come in under those because it would then be part of our certified LCP. If certified entities agreed with that and didn't come back to us. So there, there is still a chance to close the barn door, so to speak.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I think there's a couple of ways. To go about that. And I think, you know, it's. I sort of took the simplest approach for, you know, visual resources, community character and protect public views. Because, you know, one thing is that the coastal act does not protect private views. So we can't. Use that. The height for private. But really that's a key. To me, I mean, Trinidad has protected private views for forty-plus years and people have invested money based on these views. And they're protected. So. So I think it's important. There are a couple of other options. If HCD does not like that, um, we do have a couple of other alternatives. Um, one to. Does it make Trinidad or areas of Trinidad is highly scenic? That could, um, make things easier with HCD. And then there's another way. More explicitly bringing in the designer view process, but. I think that's a little bit of a, doesn't really follow the state regulations anyways. I think this approach, we'll, we'll see. And, and the coastal commission seems supportive. Um, I guess it's just how much pushback is HCD.
Part of respecting.
Keeping the height.
Okay.
And I also wanted to. I see that, or I've heard quite a lot with the coastal commissions, this is what I hear from you. That they don't. That we can't, the views aren't. Or they, they impact, view impact is not what they're determining. But in their paperwork here, I see all over there to. Protecting, protecting sensitive areas, protecting, they do want to keep it. In a certain manner, although they're not saying that, but it, it is protecting a certain. Cultural or not cultural, but a certain way of it.
Yeah, I mean, environmentally sensitive habitat areas have a specific designation. That's usually sort of environmental, you know. Na- natural areas, but no, they, um, public views. So from, from streets. Um, of the coast, but also visual resources like town and the sea now. You know, that. When, you know, it's quaint and it's, it's got this. Uniqueness and Trinidad is similar in that. You want to protect that look and feel of this coastal community. Now, you know, we have a lot of large houses in Trinidad, so it's hard to argue that everything should be kept. Low, but that's again, going through a design review process. But yeah, so, you know, protecting visual resources, public views and. You know, community character is, is in there somewhere too. So, so yeah, I, I think they're supportive of keeping the height. At least for, again, that's for ministerial approval. Someone can come in and ask for. A used permit designer view for the water. And, and that's, um, I think that's going to be hopefully a map for HCD.
That's where it goes into that other for review. And. Really, there's, there's enough hills and we can design a bit. If, if everybody, everyone works with it a little bit, it can work. That house over there is a prime example of, you know, it, it could, you don't have to take away views to get where they want. And so that's what. In regards to. To me, it's just, we need, we need people to teach and need to place to live. That's the same to me. And we have to just. Have a move to make that happen. Getting back to what we were talking about. But, um, yeah. I think the coastal commission wants. That's my.
Your launch.
My data. How I made it, how my internal lawyer reads it.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, yeah, like I said, I, I. Yeah, no, there, I think they're supportive of, of this version. It's, it's not because it's brand, well. But I say like brand new, even after January first, but still it hasn't come through an LCP amendment yet, I don't think. So it's not an issue that they. Are used to the sixteen.
Yeah, what I suspect is a, a very uplandish question. Uh, but the. The issuance of these OWTS. Permits or. Or that's one improvements. It's a, a check essentially, right, for Mr. Ellen peoples? Here's the old man's question. Will Trinidad ever have a sewer system?
Not likely, the highly likely. Um, yeah, there's a, there's a couple of reasons for that. One is, um. No, no new discharges are allowed in the ASBS. So where would you discharge it? And two, the expense of a sewer system for this. The population is just, I don't think ever going to justify. And, you know, there was a period of time in the seventies where there was a lot of public money for sewers and that just.
Yep.
I can say nine to nine percent.
Which means that the robustness of this OWTS improvement as a check will persist. Definitely. Um. Going back to the original question about whether the primary residents should be an ADU or not. Looking at the definition of an ADU. Maybe there's more robust definitions elsewhere. But. Is there language anywhere describing? How much smaller an ADU should be than the primary residence? Right? It's about to build a fifteen hundred square foot primary residence and thirteen hundred square foot. ADU within the ADU and rent the primary residence.
And. I think when we wrote the original, our first ADU ordinance back in. There was more of a limit on, it couldn't be more than. Something like that. And I think there is a standard in here. It, it can't be more than fifty percent or eight hundred square feet or something like that. Um. So there is a limit, but so the state law has loosened that over the years. Do, they want you to at least be able to build. An eight hundred square foot. To either one better than, I think, twelve hundred.
Um, I guess also. Referencing their original question here. I mean, I think. I would support allowing the. Primary residence to be an STR. For the reasons that you gave, that. You're still creating an additional housing unit and given our STR ordinance. There's another housing unit available in town. Whether you like it or not, but I think. I like the idea of. Um, I think going back to like affordability. Having affordability, I like the idea of somebody who's like. Creative and trying to hustle and wants to live in Trinidad, but it's just maybe a working class person. Like them being able to find creative options to. To make a house or to buy. And make it like a living in Trinidad, I guess. And I think. Like allowing some amount of flexibility so that way they can do that. And not just. Yeah. And not just saying, no, you can't. Have a short-term rental. I mean, those short-term rentals, as we know, like they bring in a lot of additional income. Could. Let somebody to. To live in Trinidad.
And I, I can think of an example in town where the primary residents and the STR in the back have flopped. Over the years where a person used to live in the front house and now they live in the back house and their front house became the STR and vice versa for rental things. So. I mean, I guess it was kind of like a precedent for that kind of concept already.
And then to, to make that, you, you know, a little bit more. You know, that someone has to actually be a, live in Trinidad, you can require owner occupancy. It can be an STR if the owner occupies.
One or, yeah. Yeah, I would support that.
We don't currently require that though for existing STRs or owner occupancy, right? So I, I, I'm just thinking logistically, now we've created a subclass of STR to try and track and logistics of making this. Process for.
It'd still be full-time STRs because it's a separate living unit, you know, if they're going to rent it more than sixty days a year. But then it couldn't just be someone's investment property that they're, you know, add into their investment.
But I guess Aaron's sort of. Wondering if that's like an additional level of complication in terms of like enforcing the STR order, ordinance?
No, um, no. But it is an added layer. It's an added layer on.
To have to track whether or not it's owner occupant, right?
Yeah, I don't think that's that hard. I mean, we have that set up. Not that we have resident STR licenses, but, um. And we have that set up. It's, it's pretty easy to verify based on the homeowner exemption under property tax bill. Obviously, that.
Well, is that even? An issue if we maintain the cap?
Not necessarily, not necessarily. It's still an added housing unit. Um, I was just saying, if you want to limit it to like what Tristan's scenario was, someone. You know, wants to live in Trinidad and make it work and that's their way to make it work. Maybe that's what you're trying to facilitate. But no, it, it doesn't. Doesn't have to be.
There's, there's not a cap on JDUs though, correct? Yes, or that's some of the text that I currently version.
There.
Right, that's, uh.
Well, I believe that might be true because.
So JD in section seventeen point five, four point zero two zero.
Yeah, so JD shall not be subject to this cap because JD is, um. In general, aren't going to increase water use and truck, because you're basically carving out. Now. In reality, they probably do because you have two people. You know, before the JD, you have two people living in a three-bedroom home. After the JD, you have. Four people living in a three-bedroom home. So yeah, it will increase a little bit, but in general, the coastal commission doesn't consider it development. I'm hoping that. You know, currently the health department. Does, even if it doesn't have a real kitchen, if it's a separate unit, they're going to require that much bigger septic system. I'm hoping that. You know, one of the reasons for limiting the size of the kitchen and the JDU. Um, is that I'm hoping that when the health department updates the regulations, which they're supposed to be doing. Um, that they will. Take some allowances for.
Yeah, it seems pretty unlikely, but can someone. Occupy full-time the JDU and then that's the rest of the residents?
Actually, yes.
So is the coastal mission including JDUs in there? I guess there.
Well, there's examples in, in town already.
I mean, that.
Yeah, but are they considering in specific, in regard to this specific question, right? Are they also considering JDUs to be ADUs on their. Kind of some other. The primary residence can be an STR.
I don't, I don't know. We, we haven't gotten into that level of detail. Um, you know, certainly JDUs would be. You know, a more affordable form of housing. And we do have sort of some de facto ones already. But I will point out, I don't, I don't believe the state code requires JD. JDUs to not be STRs. So. But essentially that would be a home share STR. I mean, it's essentially what that would be. And maybe that's, maybe JDUs can be home share.
Yeah, I was looking at kind of your primary question here, the one particular that I'd like to get our input on whether STRs of any type are allowed in either the J or ADU or primary joint. That's on packet page. I think one, the first full paragraph. And I had kind of just made a margin note here that. Junior ADUs are, you know, as an STR is basically a home share STR. I, I really don't know that. I can't find a reason yet to see that any differently. So from that standpoint, just for me personally. I, I would say yes, an STR could be allowed in there. It's already not subject to the cap. It's, somebody can be doing it anyway right now. The ADU piece is where. The question really starts to kick in for, are those part of the STRs or not? Are they? You know, is, is it fair to? Exclude them? Is it, they want us to exclude them? You know, I, I don't know. It's, it's that balance point. So an ADU becomes an STR, a theory that frees something else up. So if we're trying to do the net balance of. Is there a scenario where that would happen where it wouldn't necessarily create an open, an additional unit? Let's say, you know, the maximum build out thirty-six ADUs.
But, but again, with the cap.
Right.
We care.
Yeah.
Right. And I think the other. Sort of from like the social standpoint. So ADUs, right? They're thought to be great low-income housing or middle-income housing. If you want to rent, but like if you want to buy a house as a middle-income. Person. Or lower income person. Again, like having an ADU that could potentially produce, that's having an ADU as an STR could make or break the difference between. Being able to buy a house or afford to buy a house or not, or just being stuck in the rental market as. You know, as a lower, middle income person, there's, it's like, yeah, you can rent this ADU. I'll charge you. You know, as a lower middle income person, there's, it's like, yeah, you can rent this A D U, I'll charge you fifteen hundred dollars a month for it. Or you can buy the whole place. Half a million dollars and then there's an A D U there that can float some of your mortgage. I think that's, you know, in terms of. I'm getting maybe a little off task in like a social. Justice or equality, whatever you want to say, opportunity.
No, I I agree with you, but I I think that in the case of both an A D U and a J A D U, that potential income. Uh, whether it's an S T, if it's an S T R, will improve the value of the house and probably make the purchase price of the house go up. Right? So. Having that a built in source of profits is automatically gonna make housing more affordable. In fact, it might actually make the house become. More unaffordable.
Though you can't buy a property with an S T R license.
And I guess to Tristan's point, I'm sorry, Tom, you were.
Oh, I was just gonna say it's creating rentals, which it's intended to do, which is great.
Yeah, I mean, creating rentals is great, but I also. Personally, like. I mean, I think that there should also be a pathway for lower and middle income people to buy homes as well, because that's how the only, we're. The primary way that Americans generate their personal wealth is through.
Which is then, you know, one reason to allow. Home share and resident S T Rs at least in one area.
Why do I keep hearing rumors about? A state, I guess, allowing. Uh, an A D U to be sold separately from the primary residence?
Yeah, that's a new, that's a new law this year. Uh. And. That doesn't, I guess it would like. But but it wouldn't be a subdivision, so it'd have to be like a condom. Like where you're buying, I don't, I don't, I don't know how it would work. Where, yeah, you're, you're basically, you're buying a building. But not the land.
Yeah, that's, that's why, that's, like I said, I don't know anything.
And that's gonna, and that applies to coastal zone, I think, is, is, because there. That might be, because several of the new laws, they, they've always sort of excluded the coastal zone. And this year, several laws do not, like the, the density bonus laws. Because of our septic.
I I guess I was just responding to what you were saying, Tristan, is that. If that law, when, when that law is, goes into effect, if it hasn't already, I don't know. That kind of means that someone could conceivably put up for sale an A D U. Uh, and it could be sold. You know, uh, you, you buy the property. And then you know you're gonna sell the A D U for X number of dollars and that goes towards helping you pay for the other place. That's where it's gonna get really.
And it's, yeah, when you don't, when you don't have to require parking for A D U, so you're selling a place that doesn't have parking. And then. For most part, they're gonna be connected to the same septic system.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just incredible.
Interesting problem.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
I guess.
Get this sort of into past and by the end of the year.
Right, okay. Um, I mean, to that, there's that comment in here that still bothers me where, um. An A D U is built by a qualified nonprofit, right? And here it can be sold separately, so it's already in here, but. Um, without getting into detail on that, back to. Kind of your point, Tristan, one of the, the things that I struggle with is. You know, allowing an A D U to also be an S T R. An S T R, almost by definition. My impression, having lived here for a few years now, is it has a greater revenue stream than just renting something outright as a single. I mean, there's an example, there are examples in town where people have. Taken, uh, uh. What was housing relatively affordable housing for somebody and have turned it into an S T R because that creates greater revenue. So on the one hand, I'm like, well, you know, no, we shouldn't allow that in these A D U's. But then, is it fair? Because that, you know, then somebody can just do that and now that's no longer affordable housing because they can do that. But then also, if you're trying to get, be able to buy the main house, then. That revenue stream could be, you know, amazing to make that opportunity happen.
I, I mean, I'd certainly see both sides of it there, you know.
And then we, but then by the same token, we don't preclude other people from being able to do that already. So why would we preclude that here? I know it's not apples for apples, but.
I mean, while like Trevor said, we can always. Just only allow that on, on ministerial permits. They wanted their A D U to be a. Yard has to come for us versus they wanna go ministerial.
But again, does it even have to come to us if there's a cap? And it ha- and they have to apply for a permit. And go through the whole. Process that the S T R ordinance requires. And if they. Are successful, then fine, but. If, if there's no, uh. Openings. Then. They can apply, but they have, they can, they can get, get the permit, so.
It is rent. It's easier and they're gonna do that. It's, you know, the setbacks. I don't see a problem with the setbacks other than trying to not block the views.
Yeah, that's a setback issue and that's, that's a question that hasn't really come up at the coastal commission, our coastal commission meetings, because again, I think if that's a new. Twenty twenty three law is that. No, you can't require a front setback if it would include construction of an eight hundred square foot.
There'd be standard. Uh, sidewalk and standard set, you know, amount of space from the road.
But mostly, I mean, a lot of people's front yards are either there, each field or there. But yeah, that's one I didn't. Didn't change in the ordinance, I thought I, because no one said anything, so.
But so from what you just said, though. Uh, if you said, I wanna put an eight hundred square foot or less. Uh, A D U in my front yard. And assuming that the, uh.
You can build it on your driveway so that.
But my leach field is not there, so I can come right out and I would not have to worry about setbacks.
If you couldn't otherwise build an eight hundred square foot.
Well.
So it's only, so you can't require a front setback if. If the front setback would preclude construction of an eight hundred square foot A D U.
But if there's somewhere else on the lot where they could do it, then the setback is not waived?
That's right.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That it, you had the. You couldn't do it, uh, regardless.
Regardless, okay.
So, okay.
And I guess I'm not saying, why is it limited to front yards? I'm assuming because that's where streets normally are. However, in this town. We have alleyways where there are street branches at the back where you wouldn't have a neighbor to neighbor fence, so you're not impacted.
So it's probably a fire code thing because, uh, you have to have. Ten, eight feet between buildings. And so that's why there's a side and rear setback so that they can't be, buildings can't be right up against each other, but on the street, yeah, it's a barrier.
I'm, I'm just thinking of that, like the alleyways on, you know, view and ocean, uh, are the two streets of the town.
That would be a rear setback.
Is that included in this or is that, so a rear setback?
It's still, but it's only four feet, not Trinidad's rear setback is normally fifteen feet. Although for accessory structures, accessory structures already don't have to be. That's why you have open garages.
So to try and move us along here a little bit, is it fair, Trevor, that if, if you were to leave here with one thing you would like us to weigh in on? Whether S T Rs of any type are allowed in the J or the A D U or primary drawing, those three things, is that what?
Yes, yes. Yes.
I guess maybe would it make sense that it kind of, as a commission, we'll talk about those three examples? At least we get our sense and then.
I guess to Chris's point at the beginning, what is the timeline on this? Do we have time to reach out to the S T R committee and get their?
Yeah, I think we're already too late to get this ordinance in place before we launch the effect in twenty twenty four, so. No, but let's get it done by the end of twenty twenty four, because then I'll be a whole new set of laws.
Right, okay.
Well, I, I kinda like sharing your pain with the S T R community.
Okay, I'm all for that.
Um, and I don't mean that in a derogatory way. I mean. I, I, I think that, uh, they, they have a, a specific, uh, responsibility to worry about. S T Rs in the community and. I think we definitely need to coordinate with them.
Is there something that would be helpful in making that decision, some sort of matrix or. Case examples or something like that? If you, if you have some suggestions.
Yeah, I think if, if you can kind of. If, if, one, I think a joint meeting between the two bodies would be great to. To dive into this, uh, so we can share the. Knowledge and expertise, um.
Those are my roots.
But yeah, if you could come up with like the simplest example, a, a, a lot in town that has no outbuildings on, other than the primary structure, they wanna add an A D U. What would that do? So then we can kind of use that as a case point for either J A D U and A D U. And then they ask, you know, the primary as an S T R on that property, then. Maybe another example of a property that has. Primary and existing A D U or S T R on it, and then the ability now to add the other, because as I recall, right, the max is one. A D U, J A D U, S T R and primary, right? Those three can coexist. Certainly, so just, I, I think coming with that, so everybody can kind of see and, and. They reach out to property and say, hey, are you okay if we use your property as an example, so we can actually see it instead of just vaguely talking about it? That, that would be helpful for me anyway, in, in this discussion, to really kind of see an example. Of what that might look like in town.
And, and I would just throw in the, uh, the, the, the. The difference between ministerial versus C D P review kind of.
And administrative, right? Because there's still.
Yeah.
There's ministerial administrative and then kind of a full C D P, right?
Yeah.
And because that's carved out here, administrative are really just the minor O W T S stuff, right?
Because I don't, I don't hear a, I don't hear a clear consensus.
The only consensus I hear is that I think. We think the S T R committee should be involved in this.
You mean with respect to your question?
Yeah.
I, 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 I think that it's very complicated and, um. I mean, I, I have an opinion, everyone else has an opinion, um. And I think we can share those opinions and our perspectives and how this is written with the S T R committee.
And I think, and I think that that's actually, you know, if we're gonna get, because again, there's not a consensus on the coastal commission or coastal commission staff either. So I think, um, the more work you put into that, the better we can justify the city's position.
Sitting on the S T R committee. I just wanted to remind everybody that that is, in addition to me, two members of the public and then two. Individuals involved in the S T R industry. Who, uh. May not have. Affordability at the forefront of their mind. Right, and I. I'm not saying that that is a good or bad thing, but the spirit of the law, as we all recognize, is to. Increase the number of affordable housing units in town.
Right.
So I do think that there is. Some merit, since this is my suggestion, uh, an hour and a half ago at a meeting with the S T R, but I also think that it might be beneficial to. Approach the S T R committee with what we have in mind. Uh, as folks who have a vision for the city beyond just profitability for owners of S T Rs. And firms or whatever. I think that input is important, but. You know, some whole lot of folks in town who don't own S T Rs, and they're important as well, perhaps more importantly.
I think that's one way. I think another way you could approach the S T R committee is ask them. For their comments and recommendations for your consideration. So it's not a decision by the S T R committee, but it's that we wanna give their inputs to make your decision. So that's one way to put it. Um, the other thing that, you know, I thought was sort of interesting. And, and part of the reason that the coastal commission doesn't necessarily, um. You know, have a consensus is because the coastal act specifically protects visitor accommodations, particularly lower cost visitor accommodations. S T Rs are often. You know, more, can be more affordable for families, larger groups than hotel rooms. Because so there is a coastal act. Protection of S T Rs as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, uh. I, I, I think asking for their comments, the S T R committee asking for their comments is certainly okay. But, um, I, I just feel generally that we should probably give them a little bit more direction and. Because this is, this is literally like drinking from the fire hose, sure that by the time that they figure this all out. Uh, it's gonna be a long process. So asking. I'll just leave it at that, you know. It's gonna be difficult to.
Could a workshop? Be a different format? Between us, the S T R committee, which might get more members of the public in, and we could begin the workshop with kind of. Of guiding principles and thoughts. The goal of this discussion is to figure out ways to improve affordable housing options in town. You know, that's the intent behind this. With that in mind, I, I don't know if workshop versus, I don't know if that really gains us much, but. Um, but yeah, with the understanding this is, I mean, ultimately, it's our decision to pass what we put in here and approve is what goes to the council with their input, which is, you know. And I think I'll agree is valuable.
No, and hopefully we would get some com, we would get some input from the public.
Yeah, and I, I, to, to what you suggested, Chris, I worried that if we just give them this document. There can be a loss of context. You know, with them as they read it and without having all of us here to kind of say, well, no, here's what you were thinking, and I think there's benefit to that as. The reality is that might feel. Also, I guess I'd advocate kind of a, a joint opportunity. So we can answer Trevor's question on page twenty one. Is, is it fair to say I'm getting the sense that all the entities that this impacts are kind of waiting for somebody to be first? And to go through this, the coastal commission staff, the commissioners, the H C D, everybody, and I just. Are we really, really the first ones to come across this?
So, um, I think just the, the new, the new twenty twenty three laws, so the height. And the front yard setback, I think are things that at least our local office has adopted. Um, cause Humboldt County has a brand new A D U ordinance. Years ago, it's only, it's only a couple of years. Just, just the new things, but S T R, so, and that was, so that was one of the examples, so, uh, Humboldt County does not allow. Either the A D U or the primary unit to be S T Rs. And I think originally it was only the A D U's. And it was Mike Wilson, who's a, a coastal commissioner, who said he wanted both. And very strongly advocated for that in the county voluntarily changed that.
But that's inconsistent with the S T R ordinance, that draft ordinance that they're looking at right now.
The A D U ordinance came first, so maybe they have to amend the A D, A D U ordinance. It probably won't affect existing A D U's, but it's in. I haven't looked in detail at the ordinance, um. It sounds like it's going through quite a few changes, but.
Uh, yeah, and it's, it's a draft.
I mean, it's gonna, and they're basically gonna cap it.
Yes.
Well, and, and to the point you keep making, Richard, we've got a S T R. Well, and and to the point you keep making, Richard, we've got a S T R cap in town.
I.
Which may manage a lot of our.
Which can, but it doesn't apply to J A D Us. A D Us can be S T Rs.
Correct, but the non J A D U version of that is the home share S T R, which also has no cap and does, you know, doesn't fall under the cap. Right, home share A D Us, you could have as many as you want in town, right? There's no, there's.
I'd have to, yeah, I.
S T Rs, excuse me.
Yeah, I think there's a cap on resident S T Rs, but I don't think there's a cap on home share S T Rs, because that was, that was what people were advocating for, is they only want S T Rs when.
Right.
The resident is in residence, so that's, that's what that. So there's not a cap on those, but again, the resident would be in residence, so. Um. And that's where I think it can make things more affordable for, you know, I think that scenario can make things. And even tenants, uh. Having that situation.
So how do we want to proceed?
Well, it sounds like you want to request a meeting with the. S T R. Committee. And. I mean, I think whether you call it a workshop or. More formal meeting, I think, you know, I think if you get the public, you know, get get some. Some announcements out there, either way, it is likely to get public. And then I guess it's just a matter of. What do you want to give them? I I think I would suggest, you know, kind of. Um. You know, you have to give them some context, but kind of keep it. To S the S T R topic as opposed to the whole rest of the ordinance.
I I. Yes, I feel that um, it would be useful to have in front of us prior to the meeting and have a chance to discuss it. Which was, I'll call it the matrix, that you were talking about, or some way to kind of just. Get this into some form where we can take a look at it. And and understand for each level of A D U, J A D U. What the. Uh permitting requirements are. And some of the other issues that we've raised tonight. Because in my mind, I'm still struggling with, you know. Oh, is this a? Is this a A D U that requires a. Ministerative permit versus, you know, ministerial permit? I'm still, I I I understand it, but I think if I could see it, maybe kind of noodle on it a little bit more, that would be beneficial, that's just me. I I do feel, though, that just. From this call to the S T R committee is is not beneficial to us or them, not fair. Um, I think they need to think about this a little bit, and I don't know when they, their next meeting is, when is their next meeting, uh, Chris?
Uh, October twenty twenty four, probably.
Oh.
Not enough to say they could, I'd call a meeting soon.
May, I mean, there's, there's so little. Stuff to discuss that you're never supposed to meet.
Okay, I guess.
Be twice here, maybe.
Okay, I I just.
This would be a reason to have a next.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
It's usually in December, the joint of the P C sees.
Yeah.
It's usually December. Oh, summer or January?
No, it's usually January, January, right there. Um. So I guess maybe would it make sense to have Trevor at our next meeting if that benchmark is manageable, bring back kind of that matrix thing for us and then. Be able to put together also a little short primer on A D U, J A D U. You know. Um, you know, just kind of high, high level stuff, you know, this is mandated by the state, we don't have a lot of input control. Your A D O is a room inside somebody's, you know, just kind of a high level definitions, so that we don't have to get into weeds, but to kind of. Load that that joint meeting.
Well, that would be good, you know, for when this gets to the council and.
Exactly, sorry, I think, because we've talked about those terms before, right? Does that sound?
Sure.
Like a reasonable approach and then, okay.
Is there any way we can incentivize putting them out of sight? Like you, you get special level work, or how well you design, you dug it into the ground or whatever.
Free grading permit if you make it subterranean.
You have to cut down your trees at the.
Because someone's going to do something, we want them to do it creatively if possible and make it better. I don't know, just growing up, I don't know.
Well, I mean, in a sense. Not really with the 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 minimum standard envelope that the state has provided. No, I I think you don't have that kind of leeway, we can't require a design review, we can't require additional standards of them beyond what the state says you can. Um.
But we can, you turn it into a C D H P or whatever. That. That, if it's. There. What was it called?
L C P, if it's part of our certified L C P.
Yeah, certified, yeah, everything becomes a certified L C P.
Yes, but only if the coastal commission agrees that that's necessary to protect coastal resources.
See, it all is a very special town.
But then does that create problems for other development that people might want to do? If we designate everything is, and not the bad, we're just sort of thinking about unintended consequences of that.
It's it's it, no matter how you look at it, it's problematic.
Yeah. I mean, I guess the only incentive that's out there for somebody is if they can come in under the uh, the minimum ministerial requirements, then they get an automatic stamp and they can have their A D U, that's the incentive, so I guess any way we can. To what extent we can massage those? Which isn't much, because they're the minimum requirements.
Yeah, and again, and I think it's. You know, you can't argue that. All houses in Trinidad are below two thousand square feet and twenty feet in height, you know, yeah, we just can't, there's too much variability. So it'd be hard to make an argument based on, we have to keep it within the confines of what's existing, because.
Now, we're just trying to protect it, any views? And or not, or uh. You know. The the way it feels, the the towns feel. It could easily become on boxed in on the roads. And that's really why we're trying to just keep it in a good way. And so if you're going to do something, then guess what, it goes into this special world and you need to do it in a good way. Need to be good neighbors.
I think, you know, I think Trinidad is is unique, but I think, you know, that is, that's part of the problem, is that everybody. Argues that their neighborhood is, well, this is the character of our neighborhood, and so this development is inconsistent, so, and I I see it, um. Next door is the most frustrating thing. So there's, there's this, there there's, it's a subdivision, I think it is, people are just going nuts about it.
Whenever you're.
And I and I wanted to comment, you are the reason why the state keeps taking away local control, because. You're trying to argue against development, you don't, you like this nice open space in your neighborhood and you want to keep it, well, that's why the state keeps taking away local control, because. Uh, but yeah, and and that's. That's where the balance is, that's what the state's trying to prevent.
I realize that you can do it, is to check all the right boxes. I'm just saying, it will need some oversight to help people see possible other ways of doing it. Other than that, the town just doesn't become a bunch of stupid thoughts, it's.
Yeah, I mean, I.
It's a goal, I'm not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Strongly up. And then, we we want to make it, I want more rentals, so I'm not trying to discourage it.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think you could, you could do, hey, you get, we'll give you. Five hundred dollars off your property tax bill each year if you, if your A D U needs this in addition to the state regard. I mean, I don't know that that, but yeah, I mean, you could probably do it, or. The city will recognize you as an outstanding A D U and you get discounts.
Pictures. Twenty twenty four, A D U.
Yeah, I mean. I'm not sure that's gonna, you know, I'm just recognizing people, I'm not sure it's gonna be much incentive, but. There, I mean.
Maybe permit fee reduction.
Well, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, you, yeah, you get, you get reduced permit fees for why, I, you know, I don't know. But yeah, you can do something like.
Um, so I guess, sounds like we've got some direction, Trevor, just to.
So.
Come back and, all right, because.
Uh, yeah, please. Yeah, I guess. Given like our septic's such a limiting factor here, I mean, how? I mean, Tom's talking about, you know, boxing it on the streets and. Like, I I understand how that's like a. A fear. That it's easy to like. Think about and have, but like. I. I guess. I think probably most of these lots are pretty hemmed in by their septic systems, and they don't really have room to expand it to. Put in another or to. Have another bedroom on the property, I mean, or maybe I'm wrong, I don't know.
I think there are very few properties in the U R zone. That can accommodate a full second. J A D Us.
Sure.
Yes.
Right.
Uh, you know, and maybe some garage conversions, maybe there could be some garage conversions on some larger lots that don't have. You know, a lot of. The primary unit or a lot of other developments. But I think there are very few. It would be, and I cannot, there's really no way to. Figure that out, um. Because septic or size based on specific soils on the site, um. You know, I do have a map, um, because the. S T R ordinance has a, if your lot is over ten thousand square feet, you can have a couple of extra people, so. That might give you, so the lots that are over ten thousand square feet, I could give you that map, I mean, that might be. Give some idea of how many lots might be.
Does our lot coverage? Percentage ratios play into this at all for any deal, they're completely exempt from that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Trevor, um, from what you just said, where did the limit of thirty six A D Us come from then?
That came from um, the waters, the water demand assessment.
Okay.
So I just made, I made an assumption, I think I took. It took all the lots that met the minimum lot size, it took a quarter of it.
I forgot.
It's, it's not likely that that many will ever be.
I have a one question. Because I think we sat down here saying that we would like to answer Trevor's one question. Answer like that's not going to happen, even though that was our sole desire, um. In that paragraph, uh, you write, there is one in particular area that we'd like to share, uh, sorry, the the. First primary question was on page twenty one, which is four or five, it was a current agenda item. There's one particular area that we'd like to get planning commission input on, and that is whether S T Rs of any type are allowed. And. Um. My question is, who the me is and whether they specifically ask for planning commission input or whether they uh. May have actually meant planning commission input, once the planning commission has consulted with. The S T R committee, you know, like they they specifically seek the planning commission inputs uh, without other.
No, I guess, um. Maybe it was more of a me. I mean, because again, they didn't have strong feelings or strong guidance for me and, um. Yeah, I think I hadn't gotten strong guidance from the planning commission, so I didn't want to make that call, so, and they didn't have a call to make, so. It's in your lap. You could put it in someone else's lap.
We have no consensus amongst themselves either, from what you've related here.
I I I mean, it was interesting to, you know, hear staff disagree on each other a little bit.
So you say you would like to get planning commission input. That presumably also means planning commission input that was created in conjunction with the S T R committee, or did you really primarily meaning? The input from a specific committee?
I think, I think it'd be great to have input from the S T R. I don't think it's necessary, I think, but I think it's a great idea. They don't have approval, um, I mean, and you guys aren't necessarily approving the ordinance either, but you're making a recommendation to the city. Part of the process where. But they don't have a kind of authority of a planning mission, but. But especially from a body that's tasked with.
And hopefully, we, with the right advertisement, uh, we can probably get some public.
Yeah, I mean, this may not be indicative of how it always goes, but Jennifer asked for uh. An availability. Our October meeting, I think it was like three months in advance, so I don't know if that is, it's going to be three months until we can get the. S T R committee together, but. It took roughly, yeah, we had. A premium booking window, we guessed this last time.
That might just be a matter of convenience, but.
Yeah.
Um, I can send out something.
Yeah, but also interaction with those folks, I think that they'd be willing to.
What, sorry, this just popped out in my brain again, um, you say under state law, A D Us meeting certain standards are not allowed to be S T Rs? Would any, what does that?
Yeah, so like I was saying, there's.
You know, obviously, none of what we're considering, you know, what would fall into that category, and would we ever likely see that?
Um, I could, I could give you that, I don't. I think I have the state code and.
No, that's fine, if it didn't seem meaningful, I would just, it just caught my attention.
Yeah, the original. The original state code said. You know, sort of had these minimum standards, and you'd have to adopt an ordinance and. It ministerially, ministerially approved certain A D Us, and now they have another set of, there's just, they have another subsection on this code. That says, and these A D Us, you'll approve whether you have an ordinance or not ministerially, and I don't really. Don't understand why the two different ones, and they're not. Super different. But one says they shall not be S T Rs, and one says you can prohibit them from being S T Rs. And I just want to.
Okay. Um, so then, yeah, I guess if you can reach out to the S T R committee for, let them know, hey, we want to put together a meeting, this is coming up, we. Planning commission would like your input as they make their decision or recommendation to the council, and then. I guess, you know, sometime after January, because that's when we're likely to see the matrix and kind of the summary, if you will. Yeah. We'd have a fun dive at this. Anything else on this one for tonight, buddy?
I think, I think you could, the chair, the S T R committee, um. Yeah, sure, this is without a thought, I think that they might appreciate seeing. This is current formats. See them around a little later, as.
You're certainly welcome to it, it's on.
I'm not going to, you know, it's not, it'll happen, but it's fun, basically, we're sort of aware.
It's, is that, who's that?
It's the dickers.
Sure, sounds like great.
Yeah.
But when I reach out to this, hey, the planning commission would like your input, I can. Point them to this and say that I will be getting you some more specific.
Right, yeah, I thought maybe this, we need to wait until it's created and bring them forward.
Sure.
And let them know that a summary more specific to the S T R. And let them know that a summary report so to the STR related issues of the ordinance is coming their way. Looking on, that was all three items, any commissioner reports? All right, uh, anything else, Trevor, from a staff report standpoint?
I'm just, I'm going to be out for three weeks, so we have to cancel.
Oh, shucks.
And which we often do anyway, and I don't, I don't, it, it's funny, I, I just got three big applications, this is just two of them, in last week, had nothing all year. Sorry, last line, actually. Just two days too late, so, uh, so, that's, um, so, but I don't, I don't necessarily have anything for the December meeting anyway, and I just, I don't think.
The council also decided last night not to have theirs in December as well, so.
Earlier, so it wouldn't have been as tough.
Can you just briefly say what the two applications are?
Three, uh, uh, if the, if anybody remembers the subdivision on Langford property, it's split by city county. Um, so Neil Ewol, his house, he's got his house coming through. Um, that, I got that last week. Um, one is the lot line adjustment of the big property on Underwood. So that's actually tech, it's, it's kind of like a subdivision because everybody thinks of it as one lot, but it's actually four lots and it's a lot. And they will allow construction on more houses, I think they'll, they'll be three lots. Then a subdivision of Tristan's.
Uh, anybody want to add anything for future gen items or we forget where they are?
My request, that's, um, just a query, because I know there's been a lot of discussion of traffic calming measures at the city council meetings, I was wondering if we are expecting any traffic calming stuff in front of us in the next three, six months?
We don't usually if, if I mean, doesn't normally see that, but sometimes I get consulted on things. Um, and more and more, because if it have, some things require, might require a C D P or designer view. Some things, it would make parking or things like that. Generally, that's.
The only thing to date that they've actually approved and moved on was, uh, striping, uh, fire line striping on Ocean and View and then painting of quasi simulated speed humps at the first third, second third of each street.
Wasn't there, I think you made a comment on a previous meeting, six permanent fixtures, like for example, with bowl vouts, particularly developments.
Yeah.
Painting and strapping is not included in that.
Yeah, and so that's where, um, you know, I haven't really looked into whether s- 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 would be development because I, but the.
It's paint, it's only.
No, I know, I know, these are just paint, and so that will, but sometimes signage and things might depending, um, but, uh, the bowl vouts are development because they, um, parking is a code. So a change in the intensity and use of land could change. So he's done a lot over the years without C D Ps, um, but that's the Coastal Commission.
All right, with that, then we are adjourned.